And I'm starting.
Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the RTM redistricting committee meeting. It's November 1st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do the roll call?
Sure.
Members present, Marcy Spolier, Karen Whackerman, and Karen McCormick, and myself, Pamela Iakono.
Okay, thank you. The next item is to consider and act upon the minutes from the meeting held on October 27th, 2022. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Thanks. Any comments on those minutes? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I think the next item is to continue to review and make changes to the maps. I'm not sure, does anyone feel like we have to make any changes to the maps that we did on October 27th?
I'm good with the ones that we put together.
I think the maps are good.
Okay. Okay, so we'll move to the next item to vote to finalize the maps. And I did draft a resolution that we can take a look at for that. Actually, I'm not on WebEx, so I'll see if I can figure out how to... It'll take too long for me to get on.
Do you need anything?
No, I just was gonna maybe share the screen, but I didn't get on WebEx in time. So I guess I can read this, and then folks can tell me if what they'd like to change, if anything. Whereas the redistricting committee of the Fairfield representative town meeting has been directed to develop a revised map of the town's voting districts to comply with the latest United States census and the resulting redistricting of the assembly districts of the state of Connecticut. And whereas the committee will prepare a draft ordinance establishing the districts and the number of RTM representatives per district to be voted on by the full RTM. Now therefore be it resolved that the 10 district map dated October 27th, 2022 of the RTM redistricting committee be and it hereby is approved as the final map of the town's voting districts, subject to approval by the full RTM. And be it further resolved that the ordinance to be presented to the RTM by the redistricting committee shall provide that there shall be four members of the representative town meeting elected from each voting district. And be it further resolved that the redistricting committee of the RTM directs or requests the engineering department of the town of Fairfield to create a meets and bounds description of the RTM districts by December 1st, 2022, to be delivered to the chairperson of the redistricting committee and to be reviewed by the committee for consideration that it be included in the proposed ordinance. Any comments?
Sure. First of all, thank you for putting that together. I don't, I don't want to adopt a whole resolution in this whole package just yet. I'd rather take some time and look at the language compared to how the charter reads and how it's supposed to be written and get a little bit more review on it, if that's okay. I definitely think in principle it's a great start. What I would be comfortable doing tonight is voting on a motion that says that we, you know, instruct the engineering department to use this map to provide the meets and bounds so that we can create an ordinance. I would be, you know, perfectly comfortable doing that if that would be.
Yes, I mean this, that's what I'm intending.
Yeah.
But I would like to also include in that that we approve the map.
Sure, I mean just that, yeah, if we, if you want to write that we... I don't want to start writing the ordinance and getting the nuts and bolts. I want to write the whole ordinance together.
Yeah, and I don't consider this the ordinance at all.
Okay.
I agree totally. We're not ready to write the ordinance.
All right, so I just would rather that we left it more around, you know, using this map to get to where we need, you know, that we approve this map to draw... If you want to say the word approve, that's fine, that we approve of this map for engineering to, you know, draw the meets and bounds, however you want to, however the best way to...
I'd like to also put in the four members because that's something we agreed on a while ago and the town, the charter revision committee agreed, so I'd like to have that in here. So we have the map and the members, and then it's just a matter of getting the meets and bounds and then creating an ordinance.
Can I, can I ask a question? I mean, why do we need a resolution tonight if we need engineering to prepare the meets and bounds? I don't understand why we have to have a resolution and vote on anything per se tonight. Why can't we just make a motion that we're agreeing to send the map? That we've all sort of come to consensus on that this appears to be what it's going to look like? Ask them to draw the meets and bounds, have the meets and bounds come back to us, make sure there's no conflict or issue with houses being divided in the middle? And then come back and vote on the map with the meets and bounds. Why do we have to do this tonight?
Because, well, the map is, the meets and bounds is a verbal description, so it's not a map. And I think that, given what the registrar of voters told us last week about how sometimes the meets and bounds description can be, cannot really match the map necessarily, we want to make the map the final word. Like, the map will be the thing that we're approving, and then the meets and bounds will be a description. I think Representative Iakono noted to me recently that in the previous redistricting committee, they got the meets and bounds and they maybe made some changes to it because to make it match the map. So I'd like to have a start by saying, we all like, we approve this map. Now we're going to get the descriptions from the meets and bounds. We're going to look at that, maybe we need to change some things, and then we'll create the ordinance, or maybe the town attorney will.
I just think that there's a possibility, and I don't know the, I'm not, I haven't been down this road before with this process, but it would seem to me, based upon the registrar's comments last week, that there is a possibility that the meets and bounds are created and there becomes an issue with the line that we've drawn on the map goes straight through a property that creates a problem. So I would prefer to wait on absolutely adopting the map until after we get the meets and bounds and are reassured that there's not going to be an issue with any of the districts having properties that are split in half and then deciding where do those people vote and which district they're in. So I'm more inclined to wait until we get the meets and bounds before voting on anything tonight. I don't think that there's any urgency, and I don't think that there's any process that requires we vote on anything tonight. I think we can wait to get the meets and bounds. I would imagine that that process should be relatively quick, probably within a few weeks or 30 days I would get. I'm not, the engineering departments, I'm not, I'm not privy to what their schedule's like, but that seems to me to make the most sense. I don't understand what the urgency is in voting on anything tonight.
I'm not sure urgency is the right word, but I think it would be nice to kind of lock in what we all agree is the right map. We all just agreed a minute ago, and just say, okay, we approve of this map. The meets and bounds is going to be a description of what's on the map. If it's, if it's different, it needs to get correct, because this is the right thing that we want.
I hear what you...
By census block, so it's a different kind of, like, the meets and bounds won't be by census block, so there will be differences.
I'm not inclined to vote on anything tonight on this, on the map or on the meets and bounds until we, obviously we don't have the meets and bounds, until we get the meets and bounds back. If everything lines up, that there's no conflict on the borders, then by all means it is my intention to approve the map and the meets and bounds as prepared by the engineering department for the town of Fairfield. But until we have that and we see everything and realize that there's no conflicts there or issues, I'm not inclined to vote on anything this evening.
Okay, how does everybody else feel?
All right, well, why don't we try and marry the two things together, so we can at least approve the map?
Right, can we make a motion to approve the map to send to the engineering?
I think that
Yes.
Sort of marries everybody's, you know, thoughts. And that way, if we have to tweak the map slightly, we can tweak it. And if we need to change, last time what we ended up needing to do was change the meets and bounds, you know, because I think we all like the map. So I think that
Ideally, yeah.
Will probably be how we go, but to your point, and we could then make adjustments. We could, you know, we, we'll give, it would only ourselves a flexibility if that.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's acceptable to me.
Okay, so it'd be a resolution to approve the map to send to engineering, and I would like to get in there that we'll have four members, because we agreed on that in the spring, and that seems to be the universal agreement everybody has, so I'd feel good having that on here too, so there's progress.
I'd be okay with that.
Hold on one second while I have it in my head. There's a map. Okay, so just before we get to that other thing, do you want a date in there? Or do we improve the map to send in engineering so that the meets and bounds can be created?
We should have the October 27th on there.
Okay. The map dated.
Matt, is that, does it say October, or could it say October 27th on it?
It's not printed on the surface, but we'll just really do that.
Okay, thanks.
And then with that, we could go back and add the numbers later, because right now it's just letters. Is that, I'm just having an informal discussion, is that okay?
Mm-hmm, I think so, yeah.
Okay, so when we adopt it, we don't have to use those letters, like, that's not...
Oh, that's a good point.
We don't, do we, do we need to figure that out right now, or?
Ooh.
I think we can figure that out at the end. I mean, we can probably all agree that we want to keep them as close to what they are currently, so people aren't totally confused.
We don't have to, we'll use that dated...
We're not going to switch to letters.
Yeah, okay, all right, then we'll come back, and there's flexibility to fix the numbers. All right, approve the map dated October 27th to send to engineering so that the meets and bounds can be created. Does that capture everything?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then, yeah, did you want to put by?
Oh, yeah. So the, to send to engineering, how do I, how do I, how do you want to write back that engineering gets it back?
For, for its return to the chairperson of the redistricting committee by...
Okay. And how about, and that the chairperson requests that engineering return the meets and bounds by December 1st?
That's a nicer way to say it.
Okay.
Our last scheduled meeting was November 29th, just for the record.
Oh, that's true.
So we'll need to push... We'll need to push the meeting out a little bit, I guess.
Well, we can ask for that, and if they can't, if they can't do it, we can push it out.
Less than 30 days, and you have holidays in there, it might be a little bit aggressive.
Chairperson.
True.
Maybe go to the first week of December and hope that we get it back.
Return. The meets and bounds. What day of the week is December 1st? Anybody know? I didn't even look.
Thursday.
Thursday. No later than December 1st? No, later.
Maybe I'll, I'll leave the 29th, and then we can always cancel it at any time.
Oh, you're talking about a meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Because we're making this deadline after that.
Oh, okay, well, we scheduled a meeting on the 29th.
Our last meeting, yeah.
Oh, yeah, so maybe we'll end up getting it faster. All right, approve the map dated October 27th to send to engineering so that the meets and bounds can be created, and that the chairperson requests that engineering return the meets and bounds no later than December 1st.
And just for the record, we're approving the map.
I should probably say...
To be sent, but, but it's not a final vote on the map.
Right.
Until the meets and bounds are married up with it and we make sure there's no issues.
Yeah, well, I think that's sort of implicit there, because we're not creating the ordinance.
I just want to be clear that we're not approving the final map until we make sure that the... I don't want people to, to construe that we've approved the map, because we haven't approved the map until we get the meets and bounds.
I'd like to propose the possibility that we may, that, I know we've talked about this, but maybe we don't need the meets and bounds, especially if it's going to be different from this, and we have to do this by the census blocks. The meets and bounds could confuse things, and we're not required to do it, so...
I know, but I, but my, my concern about the whole thing has even heightened more after what the registrar explained with there being a discrepancy. I'd rather get it in writing so that it's clear for, for the registrar's office to not have to worry about it. Now I'm more worried about them having clarity than, I'm willing to change the words to work with them, as opposed to how they changed the words to work with how they did it, yeah.
So I want to mention that registrar Matt Wagner has joined the meeting or is here. And Matt, can we ask, can you just explain again, because I can't remember the details, how, how that, where the confusion comes in between these?
I wouldn't say that it's... All right, sorry. Is this good, Jerry? Here, I'll sit, so I'm at least... Oh, look at that. That's why you hire a professional. Hey there. So I would say that it's not a question of it being confusing, it's just that it's, there's not like a discrepancy that arises between them. You could perfectly render the census map in meets and bounds language and still have to look at a property to see where the line goes through it, right? That's just the nature of, you know, having watercourses and having cul-de-sacs where the line connects to an adjoining street. It's, you're not going to avoid us having to do that examination on a half dozen properties in the town in the course of implementing the map, just, you know, that's a part of what we do. It's not a problem that arises, it's just part of the process. Every town that has complicated borders will, will go through that same thing. You know, the Wilton registrars and the Granite registrars can tell you their stories of, you know, going through the woods and figuring out where the line goes, so...
Does that happen whether or not we use meets and bounds, or it only happens if we're doing meets and bounds that...
Well, so I would say that the census, because we're required to use population figures that come from the census, the census boundaries are authoritative. You can make the meets and bounds match them by carefully making sure that where the, you know, for the most, almost all of the lines go down the centered lines of streets, right? That's, that's 90% of your boundaries, so that's very easy. And on those places where it's not the case, you, you know, just carefully read, okay, this is where this watercourse goes, that we're, are we describing it properly? You know, you can make it, like, conform precisely to the census map, which is authoritative for determining the population figures. But that's, you know, and I have no problem with that, you know, it's a time-consuming process, but if that's what people want to do, you could certainly do it.
And if we didn't do meets and bounds and we just had the map, is that, do, might you still have that issue of having to kind of figure out where the boundaries are?
Meets and bounds don't do anything to reduce that.
Okay.
I mean, it may be that the engineering department does that work for us, right? Like, that, that they are the ones saying, well, here's where this, where the dwelling unit is situated on this property, and they can tell us that information because of their data, right? I mean, that's, that's possibly true. But you don't eliminate the need to do that work by rendering it in meets and bounds.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Anybody else have questions for?
When do you go out and, and figure out how and where that happens? Like, at what point in the process do you go in the woods?
You know, I would say when you're putting all of the data in, right, on those, those places where it's not clear, and we could roll out the map, and I could try and, like, use a highlighter and find the spots, if you're interested in that. You find, okay, well, like, in the last decade, it was like Saddle View was one of the ones that was complicated, where we had to figure out where the cul-de-sac cut through a property. And, you know, we say, okay, well, we have these five properties on this street, these two are clearly in this state rep district, these two are clearly in this state rep district, this last one, where's the line, where's the house, let's figure that out.
Can I just interrupt one minute? There are people saying that they can't hear the audio.
I don't know what the problem is. We tested the audio.
Okay.
The mic's not on, and it's turned off.
All right, well...
So when we're putting it in the computer and we reach a point where we say, okay, well, we don't know where this house number goes.
Okay. I mean, I really just would feel more comfortable if we did it, and I don't think that, listen, we're all sitting here having a rational conversation. I think we all want, don't want to redraw this whole thing all over again. So I think that we're all agreeing in this motion that the intent here is to adopt this map, but give us the flexibility to tweak something if we need to.
Yeah, okay.
Not redraw the whole thing.
If we need to, because of the meets and bounds.
Yes, based on what...
Not because of any other reason.
Right, I did that, like it anymore.
Right, right.
That is correct.
That'll do it.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, very sorry.
It's okay.
I'm glad I'm not the only one that messes up the sound on a meeting.
Because I, you know, there's a green bar, it's always lit.
Yeah, yeah.
It just went out.
It must be that thing.
I don't know, it's happened before, though.
No, we were in a different room, yeah.
Welcome to WebEx. Enter your access code or meeting number followed by pound. Enter your attendee ID number followed by pound. If you do... Your entry, 78707, is not valid. Enter your attendee ID number followed by pound. If you do not know your attendee number, press pound to continue.
Go to meeting info.
So hot in here.
Meeting info is up in the upper cab.
In the building. Yeah.
Your entry is not valid. Enter your attendee ID number followed by pound. If you do not know your attendee number, press pound to continue.
Oh, there we go.
Karen, do you want me to add in the words for an ordinance at the end of that sentence?
No, that's okay.
Okay, because I can say approve the map dated October 27th to send to engineering.
We should have it back.
No, it's, I don't...
We should have audio now?
Yeah, I think so.
I was being all fancy and legally with the background.
I was. Well, is anybody...
They say, it works now.
Oh, good. Okay, okay.
Sorry about that, folks.
Okay, we're back. Okay.
We're better than ever.
So I think we have that.
Okay. Is that okay now?
I'm reading it one more time.
Yeah, read that out.
Approve the map, whoop. Sorry. Approve the map dated October 27th to send it engineering so that the meets and bounds can be created, and that the chairperson requests that the, that engineering provide the meets and bounds no later than December 1st.
Yes.
That's good. Regarding the 10 and 4.
Yeah.
Yes, I believe that in principle we're all in agreement with 10 and 4 based on the fact that we have a 10 district map in front of us.
Right.
Certainly, I think we've debated this long and hard over how many people should be the membership. I don't think we're ever going to budge off of, you know, I certainly wanted less, there are other people that want more, and 4 is where we are in the middle. That said, before we agree to that, I do have just one other concern that, because it seems like every time we adopt an ordinance, then there becomes consternation over where the polling locations are, and then it ends up back at the RTM. I would like to work into this somehow that, that the polling location shall, the preference shall be for town-owned buildings, you know, and is geographically centrally located as reasonable, or something to that effect.
To tie the hands of the registrars.
It's not tying their hands, it's just saying, preference will be given, so preference will be given for the, a town-owned building, and preference will be given for geographically centrally located, and take this fighting, infighting over polling locations away.
I think, I guess my first instinct is to maybe say, like, we request that they consider this, rather than preference will be given, because I just don't think it's our job to direct the registrars when they're elected officials and they have a statute that they have to, that they follow.
Okay.
Might be against the state statute.
Yeah.
No, we're not mandating it.
We're not mandating...
We're saying that this would be the preference, because if you think about it, I think most people want to vote as close to their homes as possible, so making a polling location centrally located in the district seems to be, not making it, but saying that that would be the preference, would just be stating kind of the obvious as to what everybody would want. And, you know, we, we have had a lot of sort of back and forth of people saying that this is, you know, just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should, and if we have at least some indication that this would be the preference, you know, it's not binding, but it certainly gives a statement as to what we all wanted, because we do have some districts that are quite vast in terms of their geographical coverage on the map, and there are, you know, locations that could be very close to certain people and very far from others, and I don't think that that's fair to the, the citizens of Fairfield to be forced to travel major distances when they don't have to if something was put more centrally in the district. So I would like to have something in there that just says that there's going to be, that it would be our preference or our request. I guess it's the same thing to me, whether you call it a request or a preference. I think that that was just something that would make sense to me to let everybody know that we're trying to minimize the amount of upset to people's schedules to get to the polling locations.
Don't they probably already do that when they're choosing locations? I mean...
I don't believe that that's been the history here. If you look at where they've been located, I don't think that that's necessarily the case, but...
I think a lot of factors go into what, why you're choosing a polling location. Is that true, Mr. Wagner? There's a lot of different factors.
If you wanted me to have a conversation about that, I could. You know, I've provided travel distance analyses for all the proposals I've ever sent, but that's, you know, obviously, there are many factors that go in. Go ahead and say it, is this listening?
Maybe, yeah.
What I would just say is if you have a preference for both something being centrally located and a town-owned building, those two preferences will, in many cases, conflict with one another, right? There may be a centrally located building that's not town-owned and a town-owned building that's not centrally located, and now you're sort of back to that same position. You know, I do, you know, I'm certainly sensitive to, like, how far people have to travel, and that's something I've always furnished in the analysis of this stuff. But again, you know, I, what I would say is if, it sounds to me more like a statement of what the RTM would intend to do, should it be called upon to select districts in the future, right? Like, you know, you're saying, are you concerned about the, restricting the registrar's ability to choose? And what I'm saying is actually, you may be able to pass an ordinance that restricts the RTM to a certain subset of options, you know what I mean? Like, it's your own, you're binding your own body essentially with, with... Yeah, I mean, if you, if you put something down on paper saying, here's what the preference is, then you would refer to that if you took another vote on where this or that polling place was going to be in the future. It would seem to me that that would be the effect of it, but...
Well, the good thing about this map is there's a town-owned building in every single district. We didn't...
A school?
Yeah, there's a, there's a school, there's a school that can be used in, in every district this time, so I would anticipate that that not be an issue on this particular...
Confirm that, then?
Yeah, yeah. It's just more or less making sure that we're not making people drive from one end of town to the other to get to a polling location.
Well, there will inevitably be some people that will have to drive.
Well, yeah, right, absolutely.
But the least number of people having to be, having to drive the longer distance would be kind of the concept.
I'm just tired of getting this, getting this becoming a fight, and I'm tired, it happened last time too. It's, we're, we're not, this is not unique to this committee. It happened the last committee as well. I was just looking for a solution that provided guidance on that, so that it was resolved, hopefully, before it ended up in the legislative bodies' lap.
Yeah, it's almost like a statement that if it comes to the RTM, that's what the RTM's intention is going to be, to make it as least disruptive to the citizens and voters of Fairfield as possible by upsetting the schedules of the least number of people, making them travel the longest distances.
There's just so many other factors that would have to be considered, I think, by the registrars, and it's, I don't, I would be uncomfortable dictating that, you know?
With this map... With this map, what are the other, what are the other considerations? I mean, there's, there's a polling location in a town-owned property in every district under the maps that we have here.
Well, it's not our decision, though, it's the registrar's.
We're not saying we're making the decision, we're just stating it's our intention and our preference, or our request, as you put it, that they select centrally located polling locations in town-owned property if at all possible.
If we vote on this now, this would come to the RTM as part of the vote.
Mm-hmm.
So the whole, right, so it's not just what we're sending, but we're sending the ordinance, which, which can be amended at the RTM meeting?
No.
No, it comes back to us, but this isn't within our, this actually isn't within our purview of what the charter requires us to do.
So we can't, yeah.
I mean, I guess we could do it, but it's superfluous.
We, yes, it is superfluous, but we can absolutely put it in the ordinance.
And it's an attempt to avoid further conflict, it's not going to be binding, but it could be somewhat persuasive to the registrars to let them know that this is really what the RTM ultimately will want to do if it comes to them.
It's hard to imagine that they don't already try to do that.
Well, I think that the history of the offices has kind of shown that that's not necessarily the case.
Isn't, was St. Pius the main thing?
It was centrally located and it was not the preference of, they did not, they could not reach consensus on that.
It was outside the district.
It was, it was across the street.
Okay. But it was far for the people in the north part of that voting district, too.
But it was going to be, but if, to put it, the opposite was going to happen if you put it in the.
North Stratfield.
In the north, in the north district.
Northeast corner of the district, all those people.
The thought process there was everybody at some point was driving downtown and driving by that main artery, and that's what, rather than driving people up to a place where there was really nothing.
There's just so many other considerations, though, you know, even with that location, but.
Don't we, since we made these more neighborhood-friendly than previously, I think even our current RTM districts, would it be less driving even from point A to point B?
Not if you look at the map, if you look at the maps, that's not necessarily the case. If you look at some of the districts, they're wide and vast with potential for the location to be in extreme corners of the district.
I'm just not comfortable.
I don't think I'm comfortable either.
Toes, yeah, I mean, I agree, it is a shame that there's been these issues, but that's sort of a separate thing from us dictating to them what they can do. I think it's, there's been a lot of that going on lately, and it's really, it's really their job, so I, that's what they're elected for.
Right.
And that's what the state statutes.
Well, but just to be clear, this wasn't to dictate to them, it was simply to provide guidance.
Yeah, but I mean, you've been saying it'll be what the, you know, it'll tell the RTM what to consider.
No, I didn't say that. I didn't say that.
Oh, it was Matt.
That's changing my words, actually.
Well, maybe.
But that's what, all right, okay.
That's what, that's what I was hearing.
Duly noted, I just hope that, you know, that that is what happens, that people are not asked to drive to one corner of the town to vote.
Are the schools that, in our districts that we chose centrally located? I don't remember.
Well, really, up in the north, if you look at it, you have North Stratfield School and Burr School, and if you choose North Stratfield School, you're literally making one end of town drive completely to the other end of town. I would hope that the selection there would be Burr School.
Yeah, if it's in the middle.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Mr. Wagner?
See, I think Burr School's really far from other people.
I haven't looked at where Burr is. On the map, is Burr inside of what you're calling the [inaudible]?
Yes, yes.
You know, my, my preference is always to have something inside the district, because that's what's required by the statute, if possible, and if it is, that certainly seems appropriate, like, you know, the criteria that, sorry, Jerry.
Oh, so the, the criteria that you're suggesting is actually, you know, we can look at that memo from 2015, that is the criteria I was suggesting at that time. So I'm certainly, the criteria doesn't offend me, the, what you're proposing, and, you know, I always made my choices on the basis of what you were saying with the requirement that it be inside of the district, which is what the statute does require. So, you know, if Burr.
That was more of the hang-up last time because it was across the street, it wasn't the centrally located.
Yeah, and the, the travel distance analysis showed that, you know, it added a mile travel per voter on average within that district to have it be at Pius versus North Stratfield, just because North Stratfield is somewhat centrally located within the district as opposed to outside at one of the ends. But if Burr was in, you know, if you had a choice between Burr and North Stratfield, talking about District A on that map, you know, I definitely would say from that perspective of making people travel the least distance, Burr would be superior if they're both in there.
All right, thank you. That, that's incredibly helpful.
And it sounds like it's great that you do that analysis every time anyway, of the travel, it sounds like you do this travel analysis, which is helpful for everybody.
I'll say that the process of producing your color map for party balance is how I get that information about like the geographic position of each voter, where I can do that, like, how far is this point from that point?
Wow.
Mathematic very quickly, so.
Thank you, Matt, that's very helpful.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
I'm glad we put it on the record.
Yeah, I am too. I'm glad we had the discussion, I think it's important. I just personally am tired of having to be the referee on this.
So could we also add the four members to this?
It's fine with me if you want, if you want to adopt that. Karen, do you want to adopt that?
That's, that's fine.
And just put to bed the argument.
Yeah, that's what I figured, one last thing. So I guess I, in here I mentioned the ordinance, but it's not like we're creating it. I said, well, you have it in front of you, resolve that the ordinance to be presented to the RTM by the registering committee shall provide that there shall be four members of the representative town meeting elected from each voting district, and that last part was, was language that was in the ordinance, but this is just our resolution. You know, I took it out of the current one.
Can we say, resolve that the ordinance? Hold on one, one second, if that's okay.
Yeah. I was trying not to sound like we're deciding, because it'll be the RTM that decides.
Right. And rather than working on the legal part of it, why don't we just say we agree that there shall be four RTM members and, you know, in 10 districts, and just leave it at that, and that we could, I just would rather play around with, it's why I don't want to adopt the whole resolution, I'd rather play around with some of the language, is that okay? Does that address your concerns?
Yeah, I think that's good.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve that?
Well, hold on, because I, when I write it all down and then we could approve it all, because since we didn't.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah. And we'll do a little meeting rejuggling after that, I think.
Okay, so it'll be two motions, right? Hold on one second.
How do you have your coat on?
I'm hot. That the committee agrees that the map be 10 districts with four members each? Is that fine?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Any other motions?
Anybody have anything else?
Do we have to make a motion to cancel the meetings that are scheduled in November?
No.
No?
Karen can just cancel.
Maybe we'll book one for early December in case that thing comes in, but should we, so.
Yeah, so, so these are all these things, so I'll put, there'll be two motions, I'll put one on the table and then you can get the first and the second? You want me to read them?
No, I think we know, right, or do you want to hear it again?
Actually, I would like to hear it again. Sorry.
First motion, approve the map dated October 27th to send to engineering so that the meets and bounds can be created and that the chairperson requests that the engineering department provide the meets and bounds, I should say, to us no later than December 1st.
Okay. That's a motion to approve that. Want to second, anybody?
I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I'm sorry, who moved it?
You.
Okay, oh, oh, yeah. My, I cannot spolier, okay. Sorry, it's hard to do double duty. Okay. Second motion, I move that the committee agrees that the map be 10 districts with four members each.
Who wants to move that?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll cancel next week's meeting on the 15th because we don't have this, and then the one after that was the 29th, let's just keep that on the calendar in case.
Okay.
And then, should we plan something for the week of December 5th? Any night that, Monday's not great, but any night that week is okay with me, I don't know about you guys, we could try the 6th.
6th is good.
6th is great.
I think, I think so, hold on one second, I know I have to be in the city.
I can actually do a 7 o'clock then, too.
Oh, okay.
Um, hold on, sorry, December, goodness, really? Okay. Yeah, that's fine, so far it's fine for me.
Okay, so I guess we.
Marcy, do you need the 7:30?
No, no, 7 is fine.
Okay.
The conflict I had ends by then.
Okay, 7. So make a motion to set a date of December 6th at 7:00 PM for a meeting of the committee?
I'll second.
I'll move it.
Okay.
Motion to add, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I think that's good, 29th and 6th, and I'll cancel the 15th. Okay, great, progress.
All right, cool.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, I guess, unless there's anything else anybody wanted to talk about?
No, I just wanted to thank the registrar for providing the political overlay maps, they were really helpful, the data's really helpful, and I'll include it in the minutes, so it's available to the public for the record.
Thank you, that's great, yeah, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks.